Board Member Audrey Dominguez.
Here.
Board Member Dawn Mangum.
Present.
Board Member Aldo Mata.
Present.
Board Member Claudine Hibbert Smith.
Okay, let's uh um do the invocation. He stands. I would ask Chief Kason if she would come up and make a prayer for us, please.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering. Lord God, lead us to understanding your will and your way. Let us not lean into our own understanding. Heavenly Father, for this great city of Opa-locka, we pray that you continue to help us to progress and move forward. Lord God, bless each and every one of us that came out tonight, and let us go home safe in our destination when we leave. And we ask, Lord God, that you continue, continue to look upon us and give us the strength that we need to do the right thing for everybody. And this we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh can we have the approval of the minutes for um planning and zoning May sixth, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Yeah, you have to call. You have to call each of us.
Uh Board Member Audrey Dominguez.
Yes.
Board Member Dawn Mangum.
Yes.
Board Member Aldo Mata.
Yes.
Okay, so um right now we have a um the city attorney um to speak on the item number one. The first item on the agenda this evening is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map for a seven point five eight acre parcel located at seventeen hundred Service Road and identified by Folio zero eight two one two two zero zero five two one seven zero, amending the land use designation for the property from low moderate density residential to a commercial land use designation providing for severalability, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Public hearing item is open.
Good evening. Good evening, Hope Calhoun Land Use Council for the applicant. Um I'm wondering, Chair, if we can just hear all of our applications together because they're all related and it's going to be the same information for each application.
Well, I rather it one by one because they're different and I would rather.
Sure.
Yeah, to go individually.
All right, perfect. We have our presentation if we can. The property as stated on the application, excuse me, on the agenda is seventeen hundred Service Road. You all are probably pretty familiar with it. Um it is the Cuyahoga site um which you, some of you saw um recently uh with a prior application. Um. While he pulls it up. So the good news is um after the applications were presented to this planning and zoning board and then ultimately to the city commission, we understood and heard um by the denial that was received um what was needed. So what we did was what my app, my client did rather was we went back and we went out to the community. And we held a community meeting to discuss um what the community wanted to see on this property. Um my client is a re- commercial developer, not an industrial developer. So the application that was before you last time was a request to change from residential to industrial. Uh the purpose of that was really to give him a maximum amount of flexibility in use and potential users. But again, we heard the community, we heard the board, we heard the commission. Um and this time we are coming back with an application for um uh c- commercial instead of um industrial use. So we're requesting a change of the land use from industrial to commercial. Um you'll see in the next application that the reason we're doing that underlying land use request is to change the zoning also to to commercial instead of industrial, which would be more consistent with the uses um to be um used on the property. Again, we had a community meeting and at that meeting what we heard from the community is we want uses in the neighborhood that we can benefit from, right? A coffee shop, um other uses. If if someone has a a use at their home and they want to put it in a brick and mortar location, they want to be able to do it here. So the application that you saw last time really focused on having the furniture store in the front with their storage of their um inventory and then it put the rest, the other commercial uses in the back. What we did this time was flip it and make it more commercial looking. So the first step to providing what the community wants is changing the, I know you guys have the presentation, I see it. Um so the first step in getting the community to where they want is changing the land use. It's the first, first layer of land development and the first change. So if we're able to do that and make that change from residential to commercial, we can then provide the community um with a a a location um where they can have their commercial uses. So I know, again, I g- I know you have it in your package, but so what you'll see is um consistent with what the neighborhood wanted, we moved the com- the furniture store to the back. We put the other commercial uses to in the front in the first building in the front closest to State Road seven, State Road nine, so that anyone that wants to come and rent or lease spaces in there can do that. So if you want, if we can get a coffee shop there, we can put it there. If we want to get a a um a indoor play place, we can have that there. Anything that wants to use that commercial space, they can rent it. The way the building is designed, it can be uh divided into a um probably a maximum of nine spaces. Um so you can have one big user, nine smaller users, whatever the community wants to to have there and we can get tenants for. That's what's going to go in that space. So um we would ask that this first application will be approved, the change of the land use from in dut- from residential to commercial so that we can facilitate the changes that the neighborhood wants to see. Cleaning up that site, I know you have the pictures there, cleaning up that site, cleaning up the contamination, finally developing that site that has been underdeveloped, undeveloped for a number of years. Um so I'll stop there on the first application and answer any questions that you might have. Or I don't know if you want to hear from the residents.
Well, I have a question, but this would be to uh either the attorney or Mr. Gay. Um the property that's located on seventeen hundred Service Road, does it have a covenant restriction?
There's no covenant restriction that I'm aware of in relationship to that particular site.
Okay, so it's not set only for, because it was before it was set for just residential. So you're saying it's not a covenant?
It is. We're we're not aware of any covenant being established for that per- property.
That was the land use, I think, which everybody kind of envisioned or hoped that residential would go there at some point. But again, as we discussed previously, the last time this was here and I touched on a little bit, due to the contamination on the site, residential is just not advisable. Um and the amount of um cleanup that's needed um to make that site even vaguely usable, potentially usable, um is really more suited for commercial than residential. So the the land use is what we're requesting to be changed was or is currently residential and we're asking it to be changed to commercial. Um my client, the p- who's the potential purchaser, um has no, we don't know of any declaration or any restriction on the property that's recorded in title.
Okay. Um has there been a traffic study on that area?
There was uh some time ago. Um so we actually went to DOT. They have provided us with, I was going to go into with the site plan, but they have provided us with permission um to access the site on the cur- on the commercial side, not the residential side. If you could please put my my PowerPoint now so I can show them. Um so as desired by the community, we have um access just again on the commercial side. We've put a wall up on the residential side, so they won't be impacted at all. Um and the study in indicates that the amount of traffic generated by the proposed use is minimal.
Okay, so another question. How will the residents enter or exit the area? Service Road can't be the only way or Rutland Street. So how is it that, because that's going to be, that area, that I nine is very busy.
Right, so there will be um the roadway, State Road nine will be reconfigured so that there will be an one access to the property. Again, not on the current Rut- Rutledge Road residential side, it will be a new access side um closest to uh closer to ninety five, closer to that side of the property.
So like the, by I nine, you mean they're they're going to make an entryway through I nine so they can?
They'll make a, they'll make a, right.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't exist now. The curb cut that's going to be created, the turn lane that's going to be created.
And um you know, everybody's always concerned about the parking. What's the formula for the number of parking spots for residents and visitors based upon uh the units?
So again, this is a commercial property, so that's a site plan, which uh we can, do you want to discuss an hour of the site plan?
Well, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
You want to hear the parking?
Yes.
All right, I have to look because I don't remember. So we do provide sufficient parking. I can tell you that we um we probably exceed the amount of parking that's required. Parking. We are providing sixty parking spaces, and that is consistent with what's required.
Okay, um so is that um company that that was brought about the last time, the Moderna?
Madonna, yes.
Madonna, are they, they're going to be, have a showroom showcase there?
Yeah, so um so sort, uh so Madonna is a retail developer, a commercial user, a furniture store. So this change to commercial instead of industrial really is more in line with what they uh do all day, every day.
Okay.
So yes, they will have, their store will be in the back and the other commercial building will be in the front that will be filled with hopefully local users.
Okay, and how will the property be mitigated from previous contamination?
So the current owner has has been going through, I don't know if that's grammatically correct, the mitigation requirements through derm. Um the property will be capped um through commercial development. They will also have to seal it and then obviously the concrete on top of um the mitigation and capping. It's so the mitigation has been ongoing.
Because I recall the last time they, it was stated that they were going to put asphalt or like.
They will.
A matte asphalt.
It will be capped, it will be capped.
How are they going to clean up the contamination? Because I know that area was very.
So it has to be covered.
Okay.
It will be covered, capped, and then capped with asphalt eventually. And all of that is licensed through derm.
Okay. That's all the questions.
I would just like to have the opportunity to reserve some time for rebuttal in case there are some questions or comments from the folks in it.
Um. So are we going to allow it?
If there aren't any other questions, we will have Mr. Lee come up and make staff's presentation.
Okay. Uh please note that uh Claudine Hibbert Smith, the board member, is present.
General Lee, uh Planning and Community Development Department. Next slide. Okay, this is the longstanding presentation about the development of this property. As you know, this property is a a major brownfield and it's 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 at a level of contamination that it require a lot of remediation already. The level of remediation depends on the use you propose. For it to be a commercial use property, they may have, they, I don't know if they're finished with the remediation, but it's at a less voluminous amount of change than for a residential development. Next slide, please. As you know, this this property is is a vacant parcel. It is overgrown. It is just under um seven point six acres, which is one of the largest vacant lots in the city, and the city is interested, the city is interested in new development at this site. There are issues within our comprehensive plan that require or request that we take properties and create retail centers for job creation and for services to the residents of the city. Um this property was planned for, in in our, in our, in our zoning code, planned for residential and mixed use. The applicant is asking to change it from townhouse um um zoning to commercial B three. But this request that we're dealing with right now is for the land use change from residential to commercial. That's the location. And you can see that the area of State Road nine that leads, that could lead into the property would not impede or uh obstruct any of the traffic that's within the residential area off of Eighteenth Avenue or Service Road. Like I said, the applicant intends to construct two structures to do the retail and the 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 assembly of furniture. The um um they also intend to provide appropriate parking based on our code to meet the requirements for. to meet the requirements for a retail center that that property would, would then be, and to provide the landscaping that's required by the code for that location. This applicant has submitted four applications. One for the land use change, one for the rezoning of the property from RTH Townhouse to Commercial B three. They've also made a request for a site plan review, which talks about building heights, setbacks, parking requirements, landscaping, and the like. The last request that they're making is for a development agreement that's going to mandate how they take care of, maintain, and do the things that are going to be required to look at this property. And I would say with this property being a remediated brownfield, the development agreement may be extremely important to make sure that they maintain all of the safeguards that need to be in place to make sure that there aren't issues with how they take care of the property and how they maintain it. This is a, a, a map of the land uses that are in the area. And as you can see, that property is, is currently low to medium density residential. And we're asking for it to be changed to blanket commercial. The proposed development of this land use change, if it's granted, the proposed development, if this land use change is granted, will be in harmony, in harmony with the general character of the surrounding neighborhoods, considering population, considering density, considering design, scale, and bulk of any proposed new structures, intensities, and characteristics, I mean, the character of the activity, traffic, and parking conditions. What I'm saying is, as it stands, with the property being like it is, none of this is possible. But if they go the distance and get the land use change to commercial and get the zoning change to Commercial B three, then we have an opportunity for a major service center of retail and service oriented things, along with, along with the opportunity to have a new business, along with a change in the area that's going to allow for development of this property. Because I don't know about you, but I don't remember when anything was happening on this property that was legal or positive. We've got to do something to develop this property and bring it into the opportunity to bring retail to the residents, services to the residents, because what the city is looking for and needing is something that provides a benefit to the residents that are in the city of Opa-locka. According to the Land Development Regulation, the B three commercial intensive zoning district permits this use, and this change would be compatible with the commercial uses that are being included at this site. This request for a land use change from the residential to commercial and the zoning change from RTH to B three. There are some challenges, though. There are capital improvement, the Capital Improvement Department talked about the necessary changes that have to be adhered to to deal with stormwater management for this property, which is supposed to incorporate EPA industrial standards. No tree planting can be in the ground, it has to be, to avoid infiltration. The stormwater pollution protection plan must contain a narrative evaluation of appropriateness of stormwater management practices that divert reuse or otherwise manage stormwater runoff to reduce the discharge of pollutants into the lake. What I'm saying, let, let me, let me break that down easily. Because of the contamination that's in the site, trees and shrubs and those things have to be protected to not be in the ground. So you, you're going to have above-ground planters, you're going to have landscaping that is protected and, and isolated. But that's the way to beautify when you have a property that has these kinds of challenges. Next, the required measures will need to be highly site-specific due to the conditions of the area, which is what I just said. Vegetative swells are not an option. Collection and reuse of stormwater, inlet controls, and wet retention measures that incorporate treatment like granular activated carbon and nutrient separating baffle boxes for each outfall could be used. These are just technical terms that engineers and, and civil persons deal with. What, what we need to understand is there has to be protections in place for this property to be usable. And that's at any level, but even more so if it was going to be residential. Okay, CRA has chimed in. And this change, if they make this change, if this is approved, this change would not be in conflict with the CRA for their planned goal for the site. The CRA plan seeks to explore mixed-use redevelopment of properties like this and this property for public residential and commercial uses to provide restaurants, public places, townhomes, maybe even a hotel. The, the CRA could now work with the property owner and the city to evaluate the site's readiness and needs and increased level of service demands on the Magnolia Garden streets. What they're going to do for that is they're going to make all the traffic go along State Road nine to get into this property. And when they leave, they go back out on the State Road nine. They don't come on Eighteenth Avenue. For Public Works, the proposed development requires encapsulation and remediation. That's redundant, we've already said that. But Public Works has the same opinion about it as CIP. The project does not demonstrate total encapsulation. It does require total encapsulation with adequate mitigating controls of the known contaminants at the site. No pervious surface should be allowed on the site. So never is water going to go through the property into the ground. It's going to go onto a hard surface, and that water has to be managed and not go into the groundwater. Water and sewer conveyances should be in an impervious trench to eliminate the risk of contamination during maintenance or repair. There should also be a retaining wall to prevent the flows from the property from going into the lake. Ring spaces that are purviewed, this will contribute to further contamination of the adjacent body of water. Greenery should only be allowed in individual pots or impervious concrete vaults that are connected to a conveyance stormwater management system to provide adequate drainage. This includes plant materials proposed to be in the public right of way. After redevelopment, the site will require ongoing treatment of stormwater runoff. That's my presentation. For this land use, if we're going to do anything with this property, this may be the opportunity. They're asking for a means to allow for services that will give a benefit to our residents that follows the requirements of the code, but only if the land use is changed and the zoning is changed.
I'm sorry, but the, the staff recommend it?
Staff recommends. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Regarding this?
I, I don't recall, but did we have a question about a wall maybe going up on Eighteenth Avenue to secure the residents on the opposite side? Was that something that we addressed?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? So Mr. Lee, regarding the previous contamination, I, I want to be clear on that location because I know that that was something that was brought up many, many times. A lot of, a lot of businesses wanted to come there, but because it was going to cost millions of dollars, no one wanted to really get involved in that location. So what's going to change if it's commercial? I mean, the, the contamination is still there.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And, and what, what, what we have to look at is the level of contamination is directly inverse to certain uses. So if you have a, if you have an industrial use, you probably wouldn't have to do that much cleanup. If you're doing a commercial use, you have to do more cleanup, but not as much as, but less than in industry. And then if you're doing a residential development, then you've got to do a lot more cleanup. Because you can't have people living in a space where if the kids go outside and they're playing in the dirt, that they end up with contact with arsenic or some other pollutant that's within the soil of the ground. So you have to prevent the, being able to come into contact with that, with that danger, with that, with that contaminant. So it's the level of cleanup that's required based on the use that's being employed.
Okay. But, but still, there's going to be a cafe, is what was mentioned, a cafe or something to that nature. You know, that's, if it's a kitchen area, how is that not going to be, you know, contaminated or get exposed, especially if it's a cafeteria or cafe or things of that nature?
Okay.
I mean?
The, the cafe is inside a fully enclosed hard-surfaced cement concrete surface. They're not coming into contact with grass, dirt, the contaminants that are underneath. That's why when the presentation was being, being given by my predecessor, she talked about encapsulating the contamination, covering and preventing the spread of it by locking it in and then building above that. That's why I gave you all of the, the CIP department, Public Works Department, CRA have provided that everything has to be done to prevent the possibility of contact with the contaminants that we already have identified, that Durham already talked about, that are in the soil at this location.
And if, if I may add, this is a property that we already know pretty much the levels of contamination that are there. They are working very closely with Miami-Dade County Derm as it relates to how those particular contaminations are being dealt with, dealt with through a mitigation process. The encapsulation is to basically prevent those contaminants from percolating up through the surface by being pretty much locked down, for lack of a better phrase, into the locations that they're at right now. This is a process that has been done with other brownfield development sites throughout South Florida and, and probably throughout the country. And this is the best practice in order for a development such as this, which is a commercial development, to be able to be built on this site. So they're basically building on the top of a foundation that is encapsulating the contamination. Now, at the same time, there will be continual testing of the site to make sure that there are no contaminants coming through. Miami-Dade County Derm will definitely make sure of that. Matter of fact, they're, they're testing right now on that site as we speak. It's under a continual test.
But my question, how is it that they, they're able to do any of this? Because I've passed by there and, and that place is, the grass is so grown, overgrown. I mean, how come they haven't maintained that property and it's been for a long time like that? You know, the overgrown.
Yes. Well, the maintenance of, of the site has, has been somewhat scarce. That's something that does need to be rectified. They are in the process of, of contracting this property in order to purchase it. The new owner, who will be the developer, will be, be responsible for any types of mitigation and cleanup in relationship to this site. So it's, it's almost in the middle of a contractual situation right now. So upon this particular legislation being approved, they will be able to move forward with the sale and purchase of the property. And the new property owner will be responsible for the maintenance and cleanup of the site.
Okay. I actually do have a question. We're not eliminating the contamination, we're encapsulating it. So, lack of a better? I don't want to say covering it up, but we're eliminating it in, in terms of there's sufficient covering and construction that won't allow the contamination to spread. But we're not eliminating the contamination. We're not getting rid of it.
That is the most proper way to look at it?
Okay.
Yes.
And we feel that the commercial site is better than a townhome or a sink. Like, we probably need to convert it to commercial because of the extensive contamination for something like a townhome project or single family or residential.
I'll put it this way, for a residential project to go on that site, encapsulation would not be considered, and it would not be approved by Miami-Dade County Derm. They will have to basically remove a considerable amount of the contaminated soil from the site and bring on new soil, which is going to be a very heavy expense to, to deal with. We're talking millions of dollars in order to do that.
Are we talking five million, fifty million?
No one has ever really put a number to it.
Okay.
But to do a residential project is probably the most extreme type of, of mitigation process where you have to move a considerable amount of soil and bring in new soil. Whereas if you're doing commercial or industrial, and commercial is what we feel is best suited for this particular site, encapsulation is the solution that's being proffered.
Okay.
But when, when this property was purchased, I'm pretty sure that they were aware that this was supposed to be residential. It's just not like all of a sudden.
Well, how did it get contaminated?
The, the history of the site, Gregory Gay, Director of Planning and Community Development. The history of the site is that this particular site was operated by a demolition company. And this demolition company basically brought whatever they knocked down, whatever buildings or, or, or development that, that was being demolished, they brought that in as landfill and basically filled in part of, of, of the water area that's there. So they kept filling it in, filling it in, filling it in. And it basically, it's, it's shaped into the area that it is right now. Now, we don't know where, what, what buildings they, they demolished, what process they went through. And the science of demolition has evolved over the years. Whereas in the past, you could just put everything all in one location. Now, when you see a demolition project take place, they are literally taking a building apart, separating the metals, separating the wood, separating the concrete, and, and making sure that those particular items- and and making sure that those particular items don't go into the landfill. So it's a real scientific endeavor um, to to basically do demolitions these these days. This was done probably over the thirties or forties to fifties since since Overlock has been around. That particular area, based on the aerials that I've looked at, it it, the demolition was taking place in the early fifties and sixties. So for that period of time, that's how that particular area um, has evolved.
So in a perfect world, if if the current owners were taking care of that property, there was not overgrown trees and grass and they were landscaping and then just cutting the grass, uh, kids could potentially go on that land play.
No, they could not.
Okay.
Because the land, the soil is contaminated.
Well, 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 not, they could just find themselves there.
Well, right now, the the property is fenced off. There's no opportunity for people to come onto the site. Um, even for those who go onto the site, you have to have this proper safety measures, gloving, clothing, things of that nature, to basically make sure that whatever contaminants are there at that property are not going to interfere with the persons that are maintaining the property.
Okay.
So so tho- tho- those are some of the things that have to be dealt with. We need to look at how this property can be best utilized for development. Um, and we've had a number of different ideals that have been proffered, at least for the past five, six years. And when it came down to the economics of it, this particular proposal is probably the best proposal that would be suited for that location and would be potentially best utilized, not only just for the property owner, but for the the patrons and the residents and and people who are living in in the city of Opalaka.
I have no more questions.
Okay, so um, if we don't have any more questions, we have a public hearing is open. So anybody that wants to speak can come up and give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, uh, Brian Dennis, address twenty-one forty Yol Street. Right now, how I feel uh, community development is full of BS, and here's why I say this. Every time that community developments put something.
Hold the mic a little bit.
Ev- every time community developments put something out and you all approve it, it's never enforced. And it doesn't benefit the community, not one time, every time. So here's the issue that I'm having. So this is the same company that was bringing the furniture, right? The exact same company. Now they want to change the land use and bring it to commercial, but the furniture is supposed to be in the back, right? So here's the thing. In business, nine times out of ten, when you propose something, you already know what's coming with it. Why isn't that being presented? So now this same company came to the residents, took their ideas and then put it forth in an application. It's disrespectful because the same residents that you wanted to hit our ideas before you submitted your application, they should have came back to those residents and say, this is what it is. Instead, they're deciding to come to the board to put something through. Again, I'm gonna call cap on community development. Because again, I could go through a numerous projects and show y'all not one citizen benefited from any of the buildings in the city of Opalaka that those gentlemen been approved, that came to y'all and had them approved. I don't know how they keep doing that. This is so egregious. And now I really understand why I fired them. None of the stuff that has been built in this city has benefited any resident. When they approved those apartment buildings that are up on Twenty Second with the rent almost four thousand dollars, not one resident from the city of Opalaka worked on it. When they tore down the flea market and the other city managers were here, he called me, they had a job fair, nobody showed up. I explained it on what they needed to do. The same people, the same people that continuously come in front of y'all, not one person from the city of Opalaka benefiting, they got a job from them. So now they are rubber stamping stuff, bringing it to y'all, and then you all are gonna prove it, and then the commission is gonna catch heat for it. So let me tell you what's gonna happen. We're gonna get together, ask the residents, and now we're gonna bring the media involved in it because apparently the people that we're paying to bring something that's beneficial to our city ain't bringing nothing. It doesn't benefit anybody but them. And I don't care about the presentation because what does the presentation build? Now, watch this here. You're going to take a landfill is if you, instead of doing it properly and taking everything up out of there, you're gonna, you you you're gonna sweep it under the rug or just brush it or just give it some uh, uh, look, you're just gonna do a facade with it. But the issues are still there. See, that's the cap. That's the BS on the same people that come before y'all every month, every meeting and present something and have the commission voting on it, and we don't get it. I'm asking for a little time if y'all made, because they don't took all type of time. So so and and it's whoever the chairman is, I'm I'm asking politely. Because here here's the thing. There are four items here, and I'm gonna come up each time, and I'm gonna say the same exact thing. What they need to do is come back to the people that they stood in the front of and took those ideas and decided to put it in the proposal and shove it to community development instead of coming back to the people saying this what's going to happen. Because just like they know the furniture store store was coming, just like they know they were gonna put the soccer field and all this other stuff out there, they know who's coming in that commercial building. They know who's coming. So let's not play games here. Let's not play games here. I'm gonna call y'all out on them again, again, Lee. Y'all full of, man.
Public hearing is still open?
Can we ask questions?
No.
I just want even. My name is James Jacobs. My address is twenty-one sixty, twenty-one sixty-one Rutland Street. Now, all the things this gentleman saying is true. And I heard this gentleman over here spoke that he said that the land started to fill in in the fifties. That's not correct because I I lived in that area all my life. We used to swim back there. Trucks didn't start coming until the late sixties and start filling in there, not the fifties. Late sixties, they start rolling in until the city finally got the nerve to tell them to cut them trucks off, which was my parents then fighting for that. Now, it basically like he said, he gonna sugarcoat it. They gonna take top and put a cap on it and all that. But most of the people, like you say, they don't stay here anyhow. So they gonna sugarcoat it instead of doing it the right way, like Ms. Cardeens said. Why y'all can't just take it all out and and restart it? Number three, you keep talking about they gonna come off on State Roads. Nah, that ain't gonna happen. They been trying to do that for, since I was three years old, cutting crossback the back back there. Reason I say it's not gonna happen because you got a red light down Twenty Second. They just put a new red light over there by the bridge. And if you do your work, the county sent us information saying that they gonna come on State Road Nine North. They finna do some zoning stuff on their own up there. So how you gonna have three red lights and that traffic's already messed up between Twenty Second and the Golden Glade? Now y'all gonna cut me in there? What you gonna go north? I mean, east or west? You only gonna let them go one way? It's not gonna happen. Traffic, the traffic is not gonna happen. That's the reason that property been so hard to get some kind of buildings and stuff for the future anyhow. I just don't think they need to come up with something better. But you wanna go from residential, like I was to the last meeting, I think, him and her with him. And what they said, now they gonna change their mind. I guess next it'll be Trump Library. You know? I don't know.
Uh, Johnny Green.
Can I just say something? I don't want, is that okay? Or no? Okay. I I just want to address your concern because I I want to make sure we're hearing the right things. I'm hearing maybe you're okay with the building if they, okay, I'm just, I'm hearing job fairs, nobody showed up. So I just want to make sure that when you guys are speaking that I'm clear. So are you, you having a problem with the building or the building's okay if we get some City of Opalaka residents involved?
Okay, so here's.
In the workforce.
Every time that you all approve something that is bought by community development, inside there, they're putting agreements in those packages, right? None of those agreements are 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 being forced, not forced, they're not being met. No way, shape, form, or fashion, right? But the same people keep bringing them. So now we're looking at the, and I and I realize why they keep coming back because we got the same two jokers. So now what I'm looking at is here it is, here's a company coming, because I know look what happened in Liberty Square, look what happened in overtime. Those people related already knew who they was bringing and what was coming. Atlanta Pacific already knew who they were bringing and what was coming. Guess what? It wasn't nobody that looked like you. I, all of those businesses and all those people that's taking place in those, they are coming from outside. They're not Miami transplants.
But I do have a question. You said that we did have a job fair and nobody showed up.
Okay, and the city put that on. They bought businesses. Those businesses went on without hiring anyone from the city of Opalaka. They did not benefit and did the entire.
But nobody showed up?
Nobody showed up hardly at that thing. So now when you look at the.
But they did do the job fair for the project.
Poorly advertised deliberately. If you know who the former city manager was, poorly, piss poorly advertised. So now when you go over and you look at the flea market and you see the warehouses and everything that's been built from the June Road, there was no residents working from here. There was no residence that benefited from any of the things that took place here. And every time I appeared, whether being in front of the commission or being in front of planning and zoning, okay, prime example. Y'all get ready to put a gas station on Twenty Second, not one, two. Local businesses are gonna be there. I guarantee you when those gas stations get put there, nobody from the city of Opalaka is gonna do it. But if you go back and look inside the agreement, guess what's in there? It's supposed to be stipulated for the residents of the city of Opalaka. Guess what? Who's gonna enforce that? Putting something in place with no teeth means absolutely nothing when you know your job, and I know it as well. So if community development is gonna sit up here and blow smoke and smoke and mirrors, because that's all they doing with you all. It's smoke and mirrors. So now you all hear us, right? You all approve it, this gonna go to the commission. Guess what the commission get ready to get? All these things gonna be filled. You know when we found out about this meeting? Twelve o'clock today. So now, again, here's this company that met with the residents and did not return to the residents and say, this is what we came up with before we submit our plan to the planning board or to community development. This is what we.
Is it in alignment with what you guys communicated?
We wouldn't know because we haven't seen it outside of what y'all putting up here. So now, if I put something, if I tell you I'm gonna fix you a turkey dinner, but then I turn around and and give you some pork chops, and in the words of Cliff Hossel, if I serve it to you on a dirty garbage can lid, would it be as appetizing? Would would you be, would it would it be so appetizing to eat? And that's what's happening here. We are getting a proposal that's supposed to be a roast beef dinner with nice steak and everything on a dirty garbage can lid. And this is what they're doing. And so we know what it is. We bring some black faces in front of the black commission, or we bring some Hispanic, we we want, that's what we do. But we're a melting pot. And when I tell you not a Hispanic or a black that is a resident of the city of Opalaka benefited from any of the projects, that's what's happening. And these jokers know I know what I'm talking about. And they know I ain't lying. So, no.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Keith Jacobs. I lived at twenty-seven Wilmington Street, Opalaka. I've been born and raised there all my life, for sixty years. I agree with this gentleman, also that's my brother back there. That's my brother, I agree with him too. We been born in this neighborhood, born and raised. And I also agree what he's saying about development. I'm a developer, I'm a construction worker. I been to do construction for thirty years. I'm a foreman on construction. I know how these projects are built. As we talking about the landscaping and all that, I've done that myself, live and witness. I build high rises, downtown, all that. So I'm witnessing what's going on, hearing what's going on, how they gonna develop this project. But like you say, is they gonna clean it up? Admit it, I mean, you clean that stuff up, now you got rats, snakes, all kind of stuff running to the community. We got a canal back there being there for years there, we swimming, alligators, all type of stuff in there. But when you cleaning that land up, when you talking about cleaning up, how you gonna clean it up? We got snakes on our front porch, all kind of stuff coming in our yard and our community running to us that we have to live on without chewing and stuff. And I'm a witness about the project because that project on Twenty Second Avenue that they just built, I went there to get a job. I went there, certified and everything, crane operator, certification and everything. Now, one, did anybody give me a job from there? I went and stood at the gate every morning, every morning at the gate, hard in the boots on, need a job, certification, all that. Did not get hired at all. At all, did not get hired, this and this hire for the community and stuff like that. No, that's not true. That's not true.
Uh, Johnny M. Green, two zero nine one Wilmington Street. This is my third meeting for this same project that they're trying to bring into our city. I disagree with them wanting to bring commercial and industrial is zoned for residential. And that's what it should be. And I asked before, what would a furniture store do for this community? I've been in this community basically all my life. And I'm quite sure I'm older than all of you sitting up there. And yes, the trucks was in and out, in and out. And it is bad, bad contamination. I don't know why you want to come and put a Band-Aid on it. You need to go deep into it and get it out. We're humans. And we deserve the best. Why put a Band-Aid on it? You make the money that you gonna put in and then you leave us with a big empty building. We got too many empty buildings in the city now. And like I said, this is my third meeting. This is the third uh, meeting that we've gone to. The meeting before this one was ba- way back where they uh, listened to what we wanted. We haven't had another meeting. I I learned about this meeting just as the young man said earlier today. That's why you don't see more people here. And it's awful. We're citizens of this community. My grandchildren, my children grew up in this community. And we've been fighting about that property for a long time. Nobody wants to come in and do the correct thing. They want to put a Band-Aid on it. You know, we, it's it's bad, it's bad down there. And maybe some of you who don't know where this property is, maybe you need to come. And you would see what we're talking about. And then the traffic is terrible now. And you, you have uh, Service Road, you have Rutland, you have Wilmington. Those areas are so close. How how can you not have congestion in that area? Somebody is lying. And I invite you people, the committee, the planning council, I invite you to come. I'll give you my address and we can walk down and you can see. I don't, you know, you could see what it looks like and what needs to be done. It's zoned for residential and it should be residential. Those people who are talking this talk don't live where we live. Let's let's get it right now. Let's get it right. Don't put a Band-Aid on it and then the problem is still there, the problems are still there.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Let me, I do have a question. Um, why, why haven't we mandated that the current owners not correct that problem if it to be a problem?
Costs too much money.
If if I may make a comment uh, on this, when this application was brought previously, didn't have an exact amount. I don't remember what it was, but it was in the millions of dollars. And all the backup information in there, not only the costs that they've talked about this evening to clean it up, developers will not touch it to come build residential development because of the liability. And I would strongly say you do not want any of your children out there being exposed to what's in this ground. So residential is not appropriate at this site based on the contaminants that are on this property. So I understand it's zoned residential. The request is to change it because. The request is to change it because no one's child should be on this site. No one's child. And it's a liability from any developer to try to build residential on this site. They will not do it. Most likely, they will not get financing, but any good counsel for them would say absolutely not. Because of the liability associated with having a child or even adults get injured, have cancer and whatever else as a result of the contaminants on site. So that's what has occurred on here previously. And why the request is here to make the change. If I make one more comment, some of the concerns, um, one of the residents was raising on terms of the employment and the jobs. That's in the development agreement. That's later on the agenda. Sir, you have to wait your turn to speak. Thank you. I'm just responding for the board to know the issues you're raising on employment. They are not in this comprehensive plan, land use change, they're not in the rezoning, they're not in a site plan. They show up later in the development agreement. So when that item is read and it's up for discussion again, feel free to have those conversations again and we can talk more about that. I just want to make sure I'm clear, the application before the board right now is only the comprehensive plan to change it from residential to commercial.
Just to piggyback off of that, just want to make sure that I'm clear, even at its best cleanup. They do not recommend residential to be on this property.
Based on the information that's been provided to us, and it's really based on the economics. It is financially unfeasible at this time to do a cleanup and mitigation process that would allow for residential development to to be built there. That's just pretty much what 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 has been presented to us thus far. Which is why we're looking at other opportunities for development such as commercial. The requirements for commercial development are different from the requirements for residential development.
But the commercial requirements still require the property to be safe to build.
Either way. Yes.
Okay, well, well, hold on. And we are stating that with this new commercial building, that it would be much safer for commercial than residential.
Correct.
Okay. So we're not covering any, I'm sorry, we're not covering anything up. We're using sufficient, I just want to make sure this is clear, we're using sufficient, a sufficient measure to make sure that the contamination does not spread, we don't have access to it. We can go out on the lawn, there will be some greenery, as I can recall, and they will be safe.
Based on what is being proposed, yes.
And the county either will not approve this building to be there without it meeting the requirements of this contamination. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's absolutely correct.
So it's not just we're approving a commercial space or not, well, I'm just proposing. Is this still has to go through permitting, like the requirements are still there?
The zoning is, and and the land use is a basically the first steps toward getting this particular property and positioning it to be developed. As it stands right now, it's cost prohibitive to do it as a residential development. It becomes more within the means of affordability if you did it as commercial.
Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
Go ahead, man.
Cheryl Kason, retired chief of the great city of Opa-locka, not only a chief, I was born here, raised here, raised my children here and lots and lots of family members, thirteen children from my mom. Anyway, and I also swam in the canal over there. What I'm hearing is word semantics, okay? Because if it's not safe for residential, it shouldn't be safe for nobody. Nobody shouldn't be there to eat, sleep, work, or what have you. Unsafe is unsafe. You can't fix it for residential and then say, but it's good to have business. It's word semantics. We need it for whatever. Yeah, last time we were here, we talked about industrial, okay? And we know what industrial versus commercial means. Industrial mean heavy machinery, uh, production and things of that nature. Commercial means uh, uh, more stuff for the residents. It means productivity. It means uh, possibly residential, eating, things of that nature. What we need to do is fix it. The word semantics, not safe for this one, but safe to do that is 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 just infallible. Okay, let's not play with words. Let's do what's right. And you know what we need to do what's right? Right, and and I, you know what? Not only did I protect and serve this city and had to go up in Cuyahoga some nights to chase folk. It's not safe, okay, for business. For nothing right now, we need to fix it. For it's safe for all of us, the residents that live there. And I beg to differ about the traffic. As a law enforcement officer in traffic and 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 investigating many, many accidents there, a lot of them deadly. You would definitely need a light coming out of there because of the heavy traffic. That's a very busy thoroughway. Okay, I think we need to take this off, leave it alone, clean up our city, and that's that's what we want. Everybody want to come here and dump and put what they want, ask the residents. We didn't even know about this meeting and that's so unfair. The word semantics, I'm sorry, that's what I'm hearing. Come to us right. Y'all think about it. Let's do what's right. And that is my prayer for tonight. Let's do what's right. Amen.
Anyone else? Anybody have any questions?
My opportunity, my opportunity to rebut chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you again. Hope Calhoun on behalf, on behalf of the proposed developer, who is not the current property owner, but intends to develop uh, on the site. I think you heard a few things from the residents and we understand the emotion associated with this property. This property has been vacant for probably more than fifteen years. It has been abused, misused, and it has been an eyesore. What we're asking is to allow the first step toward developing positive lea- in the community and on this property to take place tonight. The application, the first application before you is for the comprehensive plan change. Changing it from residential, which you have heard, is that it's not just a matter of economics, it's a liability um, to change, to pu- put residential there. So we're asking the land use to change from residential to commercial. The reason we're before you tonight with a commercial request is because we tried industrial. And the developer heard loud and clear that there's no desire to have manufacturing or trucks or heavy lifting or anything of the sort there as a result. And after listening to the community, um, we've come back with a request to change the land use from what's unsafe residential to what is safer, and that is commercial. Um, the commercial use, if permitted, if the change is permitted, we can have the uses in the community that everybody said they wanted. And that's why we're here. With regard to the mitigation, I will tell you, um, most of you have seen me here before and I do work in other cities. A prime example of mitigation that's simple is a golf course. You've seen it throughout South Florida. People change golf courses, convert golf courses to residential uses. That's probably one of the lowest levels of um, contamination. They don't remove it all. When you redevelop a golf course for residential, some of the arsenic that's there remains. It is capped and then it's built over. I've done commercial, I've done redevelopment of golf courses. And often, um, derm requires a covenant that goes with the property that says you can't plant trees, you're not fruit trees, you can't plant fruit trees. Because you don't want people eating from that, from the trees that could grow. So what you're hearing is this is way worse than a golf course. So way worse than a golf course means it is not all going to be removed. Some of it has been removed, it's currently being um, maintained and monitored. Further mitigation will take place, but it's not all coming out. It's it it requires a portion of it to be covered, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, whatever it is, it's not all going away. We are going to do what's consistent with derm requirements and any other agency that monitors um, redevelopment of a contaminated, a brownfield site. Um, uh, so that it's safe for people to to um, to visit the site, but not live at the site. Um, with regard to traffic, traffic studies indicate you have much less traffic when you have a commercial use than a residential use. Because when you think about how the average person travels, right? If you, if you have a residential home, you leave home, you come back home, you go home for lunch, your your kids go home, your grandkids come over. It's a lot more trips, a lot more traffic. As opposed to a commercial structure where you just go to the store once a week maybe and then you leave. So the amount of visitors to the site is less, traffic is less. Lastly, with regard to proposed access along State Road Nine, two things. We have approval from uh, the Florida Department of Transportation. They've actually extended their approval because as you know, we were here before you once. Um, they've extended the approval to um, for the access that we've requested on State Road Nine. That access that we've requested, again, you'll see it in the site plan. Um, it is not on the residential side, is exact opposite of the residential side. On the residential side, as the residents have indicated they wanted, we created a a a wall with a sidewalk. So if people want to walk the area, they can from their neighborhood. So we are making it as safe as possible, both from an environmental and from a community um, interaction standpoint. We are mitigating to the highest extent available and um, and required um, in order to allow commercial development. We are trying to create a good thing in the city. Again, for the fiftieth time, we heard what the residents said, they didn't want industrial. So we're providing commercial. The people that that came to our community meeting were from the neighborhood. And I I remember one woman, whose name I can't remember now, she said she has a business and she could potentially put it here in a brick and mortar spot instead of just just online. So we're ready for that. That's what we're proposing. And that's why we put the commercial in the front and the furniture store in the back. Because the other thing the resident said, and the and that my client is here, is they don't, they don't necessarily care about the furniture. They may not buy it, but what they want to see is a place where they can buy coffee. Or they can, again, build uh, have their own their own stores. So this is just the first step, the first step. We have a comprehensive plan amendment changing from residential, which is unsafe, to commercial, which is much safer. The rest of the applications that will flow and follow, you asked chair that we do one at a time. We'll we'll speak to the other concerns raised and I'm happy to answer all of those questions now or whenever you'd like. But this is just the first step. And as has already been stated, we stop, start here and we go to the commission and we still have plenty of other agencies that have to review our applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Very good. Motion?
Be, um, before we vote, I just want to put my uh, two cents, you know, from the beginning, from when they started, they brought it the first time. You know, they said it was, uh, this is a residential. They wanted to change it to um, industrial, now commercial. Um, the fact that we had uh, that this is, has contamination, and I raised the this before. Like, it's not going to disappear just because you put asphalt or whatever the case may be. It's still going to be there regardless, you know. And and whoever visit that place might might be, you know, in danger at some point. Um, I do want to see that develop, but you know, the thing is, is that if it's been fifteen years, why hasn't that place been even cleaned up for at least it looked nice? You know, I mean, Opa-locka probably owns the property by now with all code enforcement is what I'm thinking because that place needs to be cleaned up. But I can't support it at this time. Um, so if we want to vote, we can go ahead and call the question.
Motion to accept the comp plan for seventeen hundred Service Road. Need a motion?
Well, I I can't move it. Someone's-
I moved that. I'm the motion.
Second. Roll call.
Board member Claudine Hibbert.
This is to change?
This is for the site plan, yes.
The site plan.
I'm sorry, the comp plan, the comprehensive plan.
I've never had not not been definitive one way or the other. I feel like we can change it to commercial. And I'm presenting this to you. But I think that there needs to be some stipulations in terms of. I think my major concern, which is what I'm hearing from them, are two parts. And I don't know if I can do this, so I'm asking really. Um, it's an eyesore and whoever that was that mentioned that we need to go by the, I think all of us know the location by sight. And so it's an eyesore. It's sitting and it's doing nothing. It could be very extensive in terms of cost to remedy the problem for residential. So what do we do? Do we still fuss and complain for the next fifteen years? We we, it's excessive to clean up. So now what do we do? Do we put something there visibly that's better for the community? And and make sure that they clean it up enough so that you don't struggle with somebody getting sick on the property. So I I actually not opposed to commercial with stipulations. I don't know how that goes. I don't know if you can skip me on the vote or. Like, I don't know, I'm wavering. Like, I want to do commerci- I I I'm for commercial, but with stipulations.
Yeah, if I may, um, right now what's before you is just that comprehensive plan change. So the stipulations are not appropriate on that comprehensive plan change. When you get to the site plan, if you want to talk about things you want addressed on the site in terms of the cleanup, that's where that is more appropriately placed. But at the comp plan, it's back to your first question, just is it appropriate to change this from residential to commercial? That's the only question in that first item, what you're voting on.
And I I thank you for that and I understand. I also know that if we move it to commercial, it's probably easier to get everything else done. So for me, it it. Come back to me.
We're we're ready calling for the question, so um, can we go back to calling the question?
The question of?
To vote. So.
We have a motion, oh, yes, ma'am. Uh, member Audrey Dominguez?
No.
Uh, member Aldo Mata?
No.
Member Dawn Mango?
Yes.
And member Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
Item failed.
It's split.
The recommendation will go to the city commission with that vote split two two, uh, as well as the comments and concerns that were raised here. So. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Opa-locka, Florida to consider the rezoning request for approximately seven point five eight acres of land located at seventeen hundred Service Road and identified by Folio zero eight, two one two two, zero zero five, two one seven zero from the current residential townhome. Our TH zoning district to the commercial intensive B three zoning district to allow for the construction of two commercial industrial mixed-use buildings located within a quarter, mixed-use, mixed-use overlay district providing for an effective date.
This is the um, consideration for the zoning change, which is changing it from residential townhouse, which is what is presently zoned, to B two, B three, um, intense commercial. We have the applicant here to speak on those items.
Go ahead ma'am.
Good evening again. Hope Calhoun on behalf of the applicant who's also here and prepared to speak. Just, um, we would just ask for the same, same reasons we stated before that you would approve the rezoning. This is literally the first step toward redevelopment of the property. If everyone is tired of it looking as it does now. We, we can't do anything unless we make these changes. We can't. My client just can't do anything else until, uh, this is approved and it moves forward and we can rezone it to have uses that are consistent. Again, with what we've heard, the neighborhood say they want, the neighborhood say they want, uh, in the area. The reason.
We do have your presentation available. So if you wanted to make that presentation now, we can do so.
Cute. Um, it will be just consistent with the land use change, um, that you just heard. If we allow the proposed a rezoning application and the presentation at this point, we've pretty much talked about the property. So these will just be some visual aids. Once it comes up that will allow everyone in the room to see what you already have before you, which is, um, where the site is. And maybe we don't have the presentation, but we, you know, where the site is already, you know, the address, you know, the location, you know, what it's surrounded by. The main thing, if we don't get it up now for the rezoning is hopefully again, so everyone can see for the, um, the site plan is you'll see the access. There it is. Okay. Thank you. Next slide please. Next slide please. Again, that's just where the property is. Next slide please. That's me. I'm not on a slide. Thank you. Next slide please. So we've already heard the first application, um, that was, uh, that is moving forward with the recommendation of this body. Um, again, we're requesting now to rezone from, um, residential to B3. Again, the rezoning at this point would make the property consistent with the land use, um, commercial land use, commercial zoning. Again, you will see the site plan. You asked for all the applications to be heard separately. And then last will be the development agreement. Next slide please. So again, I'm showing you what you already know. It's already been discussed. That's how the property has looked for generations. And so we are hoping to make a change. The last time, again, this was before you, we talked about, um, the, um, the amount of contamination on the property. We want to change that. We want this to look better than it, a hundred percent better than it does now as it has looked for generations and generations. Um, we want to make it look better. Uh, next slide please. So again, phase two, um, environmental site assessments have been prepared and reviewed by staff. And as you can see, it's over a thousand pages. So it's very, very comprehensive. Um, and a detail about what's out there. Next slide please. And as you've already heard, um, significant remediation has already been undertaken. $2 million has been spent already for remediation. Monitoring wells, that's what we talked about. That ongoing monitoring is there. It's going on through the wells. There is a brownfield site rehabilitation agreement. Again, we discussed this previously. So $2 million have been invested just to get it to where it is now. So there will be an additional capital financial investment needed. No, thank you. Investment needed, um, to, to get it to a place where it's safe for people to visit and conduct business. The, again, we'll talk more about this, um, uh, in the site plan, but the prior application again was for industrial. And so what you had was a building that wasn't as, um, it was a little industrial looking in its design. And so what we're doing is changing that to something that is more commercial in use. And so, um, as I discussed earlier, you can see State Road nine, uh, is at the top. Um, and so the commercial uses that will be proposed and introduced. And we don't have tenants yet. We have no idea. We have to get a site plan approved first. Residential development is very different than commercial development. When a residential developer builds, they know who they're building for. They know their audience. A, uh, commercial developer, um, is, it, things are a little different. They build, they build in this case, and then try to determine who will be there. And that's partly because again, we heard from the community who said we might want to be there. Can we rent a space there? Can we go in there? So in the bottom building is where the furniture will be sold and stored. There will be no manufacturing. There'll be no type of industrial assembly. There'll be nothing. There'll be selling furniture and storing furniture in the back, uh, the back building. So you can see on this, again, we'll talk about it a lot more if you'd like during the site plan application, but there is one access opening off of State Road nine. Again, that has already been approved by the Florida Department of Transportation. They are the regulatory agency for State Road nine. Um, and again, that's just another view of the two buildings. The thing that was done to make the building a little bit more commercial in nature and less kind of industrial looking is more glass was added. The, the facade was changed, um, stone was added to just try to soften it up. So it doesn't look industrial. It looks more commercial. The users that you see here are just potential. This is conceptual. We don't have them yet, but we've, again, we've heard what people want. So if we get to build it, we will continue to try to pursue, um, having those uses come in here. The idea is for it to be a welcoming location that people won't live in or on, but can visit and then leave. So this is the front of the building of the commercial building. And this is where Modani furniture will be. Again, it was made very clear that the furniture and the storage of the furniture wasn't a primary concern or of interest to the neighborhood and the residents. So we moved it to the back. So we again, very hurt. I'm repeating myself again. This is the access off of State Road nine. This is the wall, the eight foot wall with landscaping that will be, um, installed as, as has already been presented. It's likely that that greenery you see on the wall won't be living, um, because of the contamination concerns, but it will be green, uh, some way. And so this is what we understood was desired. We have a wall along the roadway that protects the residents from the commercial business that is, uh, going to go next to them. Not industrial, no trucks, no heavy lifting, no loud noises. Just businesses that they can enjoy and use, um, on a property that doesn't look so great today. We're proposing, um, signage obviously for the site. And if, if the city is interested, we would put a new welcome to the city sign there. If the city doesn't want it, we won't do it. Those are some examples again, of some of the uses. Again, we heard we can do indoor soccer or indoor, indoor playground or indoor paddle ball or whatever wants to go there. This is a facility that can be used by the neighborhood. So again, um, somebody asked earlier about traffic. Again, these are more site plan things. So I'm going to go quickly. A 233 daily trips, um, much less, fewer, was fewer trips, less trips than a residential use. For the 50th time, the rezoning to, uh, B3 would be consistent with the land use and it is now the second step toward getting, uh, positive development, uh, in the area. Um, and getting an eyesore cleaned up. Um, I'll leave the rest of the slides till we get into the site plan and the other applications. I'm happy to answer questions on the rezoning. We've, we've submitted an application. You have it before you are written. Written documents are consistent with what I presented and with the city's code. And I think staff is going to speak next. And I believe they're also recommending.
Gerald Lee, planning and community development department. Presentation. Okay. As has been discussed, this is the second step in the change of the possibilities for the use of this property. This is a request for the rezoning of the property from RTH to B3. The B3 zoning permits retail uses that would be proffered for this property. That's, that's when we would have the opportunity to bring services to the city and to make use of this property based on the current situation with the contamination that has been identified. As you know, from the zoning code, the city commission has the ability to rezone property. And when they have, have determined or decided that, that they would allow for the rezoning, it still has to be in conformity to the zoning code for whatever is being anticipated for that property. That section of the code is section 22-54 of the land development regulations. The applicant has submitted the applications, the documents and gone through the process to be able to submit this request. And it is before you now. That's the four requests that they've made. The approval criteria is as follows. The proposed change that is being, um, proposed is contrary to the established land use pattern. It is not. The proposed change would create spot zoning. There are commercial properties just to the north of this one. So it would not create spot zoning. The proposed change would alter the population or traffic patterns and thereby negatively impact public facilities such as schools, utilities or streets. They have mitigated the possibility for difficulty with transportation by getting approvals from the Florida Department of Transportation for the only way to get into this site from State Road nine and not through the residential area. The rest of the operation of the site is going to be a commercial one. So it doesn't have any effect with schools or any of those things. The proposed zoning district boundaries would become more illogically drawn. This, this zoning for this property is the property. So it's not illogically drawn. The proposed change would be in conflict with all or portions of the city's comprehensive plan. The city's comprehensive plan talks about providing for changes to industrial districts and other properties to accommodate more retail, commercial and service uses for the residents. This would be in line with providing what the comp plan has been requesting. The, there is an additional need for uses permitted within the proposed zoning district. The meetings that were had with the residents is when they were asking for things that they wanted to see in the city of Opalaka. And, and this, this property owner, this, this developer is making an opportunity for those kinds of uses to become available. The proposed change will create or excessively, in, excessively increase. Yeah. Increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety. As I said before, because of the agreement and approvals that they've already obtained from the Florida Department of Transportation, there will not be an increase in traffic in the neighborhood. It's going to come off of State Road nine into this property as was shown on the site plan. The last one at the bottom is the proposed change will create a drainage problem. Well, because of the uniqueness of this property and the fact that it deals, deals so, so strongly with contamination issues. Can, uh, drainage has to be monitored, has to be, uh, planned for. It has to be mitigated in so many ways. That's not going to be an issue. And it went off. Okay. And the proposed change will reduce light and air to adjacent areas? That's not going to happen. Uh, the, the, the property is purposefully set back away from the other properties and they were going to provide a buffering wall to separate the commercial use from the residential area. So it should, it should not, uh, uh, impede light or any other things for the adjacent properties. The proposed change will adversely affect property values. Development of this site should increase values in the neighborhood. The proposed change will adversely affect, oh, sorry. The proposed change will be a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties. I think the improvement that, that is being planned for this property should open the door for additional development, additional upgrades for property values to increase because of new development in the area. This, this property has been undeveloped and eyesore in a dangerous place for a long time. So to have this property developed should be a catalyst in the area for development. And lastly, there are no substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in accordance with the existing zoning. Because of the level of contamination and the liabilities that are associated with it, that might be a, a, a no. And making the change in zoning would, would assist the development and reduce the liabilities that we have discussed previously. Okay. Now, whether the change suggested is out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood is residential. It is proximal to State Road nine and would add the opportunity for retail centers that will be near residential. If you look at 22nd Avenue, the residential is not necessarily on 22nd Avenue, but the zoning that's down 22nd is of B2 or commercial uses and then residential behind it. And this is following that same pattern. It's not different from what should happen, what should occur. Uh, it, it is possible to find other sites already zoned, pertaining, uh, permitting the use requested. For the size of property that we're looking at, and as I've said earlier, this is a large vacant parcel. And so for the scale and for the opportunity to bring to have a, a retail center, to have a retail hub that this might be able to provide for the city, there is no other property that is like this. It is unique in that way. The proposed rezoning would meet all the other regulations. That's a part of the site plan requirements. And we, we are expecting that all that has been submitted is in agreement with the zoning code and with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval based on the rezoning of this property.
This is a public hearing item. Public hearing is open.
Brian Dennis, address 2140 York Street. Let me give you a little bit. If it's not going to be done right from the beginning, meaning this is commercial, right? So the residents and those public housing units, they had the opportunity to sit with the developer, create the plan. And every time the question was called, whether it be in the city of Miami or Miami Dade County, you didn't get any opposition. You didn't get any opposition. So if it's not going to be done right from the get-go, and we can clearly see this is not what it is. It's not going to be right. I could tell you anything to get your vote. I could promise you anything to get something done. But when it comes to the actual project, once it breaks ground and begin to unfold, you all have no idea what's going on over there. You have no idea. So when staff recommends. So when staff recommends, of course, staff gonna recommend. But if staff seeing the actual project through, again, I'm gonna say no. And it's factual, it's a no, right? So let me say this to you all. Here's an opportunity for you all to sit with the resident.
Mr. Dennis, can you address?
There's an opportunity for this company to sit back with the residents, to be able to come up with a comprehensive plan. So when it comes to this board, which we're then go into the commission, you may have full agreement. If it's not going to be done that way and you're doing it in such a way that is sneaky, you're going to get the adversity that has come. How can two walk together unless they agree? Apparently, there's no agreement. Apparently, there has been no agreement from the outset. So now, again, we're in the planning stages. If you ain't right and talk, if, if you're not right from the beginning when it came, how you gonna be right? Right now and saying, we just want to change it and then we'll get it right. It ain't right. If you come right, it's going to be right. You come wrong, it's going to be wrong. That's where the opposition is coming from. So now, even with the jobs and all that, yeah, it's ahead of it. But again, before you get there, it's not right. So what makes you think it's going to be right, right now? It's not right. Ladies and gentlemen, do your due diligence. East Gulf Drive, if you don't know where East Gulf Drive, I'm gonna show you where it's at. It's the McDonald's that sit behind, that sit across from Miami-Dade. Go back there, that same slide that she showed, it's a wall back there where the Taco Bell and the racetrack, all that. You right, that's what that wall is, where those warehouses at. But if you come across on West Coast Drive, we see the townhouse that was built and everything like that. Two different structures, right?
Thank you.
But it requires the same thing, agreement.
I have a question for that. Um, I have a question for you. You, you, you're referencing that you met with the developers and you guys came up with an agreement. Without taking three minutes, can you in 30 seconds summate? Like, I wanted, what was that agreement?
I wasn't there, so I didn't meet with the developers.
But you're referencing that they met with the homeowners or the home?
They met with the homeowners. So those homeowners that you see here now are not in agreement with the project. Because again, they didn't even know this meeting was.
What did they want? When you say done right, what does that mean to you?
From the word go. If I plan something, if I'm throwing you a surprise party, the three of us will have to come into agreement that we're going to do this thing right to make it be that.
So you saying that they met with the developer, they were just not in agreement at that time?
At that time.
Okay.
So you continue to work together. If you continue to work together, I'm quite sure.
What, what do they want?
They will have to meet with them.
But they left.
Because you gave the proper vote. Now, again, here's the opportunity to give it to them. If you sit and plan it properly with those residents.
What does properly mean to you?
Properly, that you include them through the entire process.
So they're not opposed. I just want to make sure that we get this right. They're not opposed to the building.
I don't know what they're opposed to. I'm not speaking for the group, I'm speaking for what's taking place. The disrespect and not knowing is what got them where they are.
Okay, so let's pass that for a second. Cause I just see a vacant lot. And I'm just trying to understand why I would want to sit and look at, and I know it's fenced. But I'm also like kids who jump gates, they play around and they could potentially be exposed to the property.
You're not going to give me the disagree for that at all.
Okay, wait. I, I just want to make sure that for the city of Opa-locka to progress and move forward, there has to be development and we've not always agreed on what, I mean, I can speak. We've not always agreed on what's coming to the space. But I just want to make sure, cause you keep saying they're gonna get their foot in the door pretty much with this project and turn around and do something else, is that what you're saying?
I've never said that.
Okay, cool. But you're not opposed, you, you want to feel included. You're not opposed of the building, but you want to see it through and done properly, which I don't see the county in the city of Opa-locka allowing a structure of that, I mean, not even a small, it could have been a house. They have to follow the guidelines and the proper procedures to get through. So if they purchase this property with this idea that they're gonna skip and cut and that it's just not gonna happen. Because there's still guidelines that they have to, to follow in order to build.
I understand that, I know code of ordinance with the county and the city.
So do we want people to still look at the bad property that's been sitting there? I mean, I have my own questions for the city, like I want to know if they're leans against the property. Why is the property sitting there for 15 years not done? But that's not a question for you. Those are the questions that I'm gonna propose. But at this point, do we go another 20, 30 years looking at the same? Nobody wants to develop on the lot. And do what they need to do to fix the property. We have a builder here now or developer that's been denied before, quite frank. They've made some, some, they've listened to the concerns and they've made adjustments to make it work.
So let me, let me tell you what was echoed and I don't think you, you all have received. There was an opportunity, there, there was an opportunity that was extended from the homeowners. So my thing would be, let me get clarity with them if I'm you all. Clearly, I'm hearing. So now, in order for you to know what's going on and what they want, it's easier for the board to meet with them. What I'm saying to the company is go back to the drawing board. Go back to the drawing board and see what can be accomplished. The only way you're going to know if it's not going to be accomplished, if it fails during the meeting. None of the meetings that have been scheduled from the time that this property, from the time that this property and these questions came have been equal. It was the former city managers were here, they had some people from Henry Anelacy, some people from out of Miami Gardens, they went around passing stuff out in the neighborhood and all that stuff, and that brought those people in here. So we're saying from that first meeting up until now, there has been no agreement. What I'm saying is erase the board, go back to the beginning, start off properly. So now, if nothing comes of it, it won't come to this board to make a decision because it would die between the meeting. But if there is an opportunity for it to succeed, then everything would succeed between that meeting. It got off on the wrong foot and it's still on the wrong foot. Erase the board, take a community development out of it. They're spending their mo, their money. So if I'm a company and I'm spending my money, I have to come into agreement with the people that I want to support my project. That would be the thing that I would do, that would be the, that would be the business of it. So now, if I get those residents.
So hold on, cause I know that we're going over time. We missed a communication point.
Yes.
Okay. They apologize. They want to proceed. Doesn't sound like y'all have a problem with the building. Sounds like you just want to be involved.
I'm not saying that, that would be for you all to, for them to meet and get a, get a, get a precise answer.
Okay.
I'm not speaking for the group. I'm just saying if it was me from their side of the table hearing what I'm hearing. Why would I want someone to consistently and continuously oppose me with something that I'm spending my money on and trying to build? So it would be proper for me to go back to the drawing board with those people that I have been trying to get to come on my side, which I haven't been right with, with day one. You go back, you erase the board, you start off properly, then I think you may be able to get some better results.
Thank you, thank.
Good evening, board members. Sorry. So my name is Nathan Cohen, I am the proposed developer on this property. I just want to say that I'm a furniture guy, so my business, my main business is furniture retail. And so we originally considered this site, I'm not the current owner. I'm not hopefully responsible for the eyesore that it is, but we're trying to do something out of it. We're interested in coming to the city. I'm a furniture retailer, so I need an amount of space for a retail store and storage. There's an opportunity to build a second building, which originally when we applied, we thought, okay, how do we maximize this in terms of possibilities to rent out, whether commercial or industrial? So I was advised to go in, I mean, my use is actually precise for half of the site and the second half was pretty open. So we came in with an industrial proposal which got rejected. And you know, I'm not an industrial developer, so I am not going to push for this. This is not, I don't develop industrial properties. This was an idea that, you know, was put in my mind because it was of interest as a development to complement my, my use of half of the site. So we heard that we should go and hold a community meeting, which we gladly did. And we thought that it was very interesting. In my perspective, it was eye-opening because what I heard there mostly, which I think is on public record, is that there were different complaints and concerns and questions. But what I heard was, we don't necessarily want residential development. That's what I heard in that hearing that, that was predominantly said. We want uses for the community. We want a coffee shop, we want potentially a grocery store. We want uses that the community can come to and use. We also want, and that's what I heard, an opportunity for the entrepreneurs within the community to be able to rent out those spaces and come in. I heard also that people didn't care much about a furniture store, which I respect and understand. And I thought after the meeting, I mean, it's very complicated already to develop this site. There's a lot of, a lot of pushback, you know, that I get from the, the prior hearings. And I was about to give up. And then I thought about it after the hearing, I mean, after the, the community meeting. And I thought, look, what they want is something that I can actually luckily provide. I need a furniture store with storage, which is commercial, which people don't care too much about. So maybe I could put it in the back. That was one of the comments that we get in the meeting. And then people want commercial businesses, retail stores. And so I put the narrower building in the front of the site so that it could be more conducive to those kinds of uses. We made it look more commercial and we are applying with a non-industrial rezoning. I mean zoning, so we want only commercial. I don't need industrial anymore. I don't need the extra options because I heard the community and it's not, it's not my thing. I'm not an industrial developer, I don't really care for that. So I think we could make it work and answer to the community's concerns and questions. This is why I'm here again. I was about to give up, but I thought, look, actually what I've heard in that meeting made sense for me to propose a new development. So we swapped the buildings around, we switched the proposal to become, to, to rezone from residential to commercial and not anymore to industrial. So people should be safe to know that we cannot develop industrial. I'm also hearing concerns, which I understand, I'm very respectful of these. People see the site as an eyesore, so do I, and our proposal is actually to change that around. People are concerned with the fact that it will be encapsulated and not completely decontaminated. I understand, but apparently residential developers are shying away from the cost of doing that. And it's not required, like there are DERM and there are other authorities that actually regulate that. And this property historically has been enrolled in the Brownfield program. So it's already overseen and there's already monitoring wells there. So everything is actually controlled by certain authorities that tell you what to do or not to do. So when we came in either with an industrial or retail development, we spoke to DERM. We spoke to the people involved and they told us these are the requirements that apply to South Florida or to whichever, you know, large area and, you know, scientists have come up with that. And these, these authorities actually regulate and mandate what you have to do or not. And so in the case of residential, it seems like it's cost prohibitive to do that. And it's, it looks and it seems to me that the site is privately owned. So it's not like the city could require the current owner to completely remediate, I think. You know, without a proper development or an intention to build. So what I'm hearing is that, I think in life, there's, there's opportunities that, that come, you know, in the sense of the community. This is an opportunity that I thought would make sense because again, I have a commercial use and people want commercial. We would encapsulate, it's not the best in the world probably. Yes, of course, the best would be to completely remediate, but there's no, there's no mandate to do that. Like there's no authority that would require any private owner to do so. It's, except if it's residential, but nobody wants to develop residential. I'm here to develop commercial, which the community seems to want to have. And DERM is here to tell us, look, you could develop and this would be safe. They're here to tell us, they're the, the professionals who tell us what needs to be done in order to be safe. This is very costly, it adds a lot of cost to the development. We're aware of it, we've underwritten that and we're still willing to develop. So in my perspective, I'm as transparent as it can get. I'm not an industrial developer, I don't want to turn my plans around. We're applying for commercial because people don't want industrial. So it would, you know, prevent us from having industrial uses. And we would comply with all the authorities that require us to do whatever is safe for the people who would come to that commercial site. This is why, you know, I hope that you could consider this as an opportunity for the community. Sometimes we don't check all the, all the boxes. If one box was to remediate completely, then we cannot do that. But I think it's probably better than, you know, keeping the, the side eyeses for, you know, a number of years without any assurance that one day it would be completely remediated. In the meantime, people are still exposed to the, to the danger and the risk of going there. So I thought this would make a lot of sense. Hopefully you see that as well. It doesn't check maybe all the boxes that people may want. And it's also hard for us to sit down with every resident and make sure that everybody is happy. But we did that exercise, we went to the meeting. I thought it was very interesting, I, I thought we listened a lot to the feedback that was given. Maybe we haven't gone back and held a second meeting to present what came out of it. But because it was so complicated, I almost gave up at the time and there were other things in the meantime. But I thought that this presentation would be a good surprise to the residents because we listened to what they wanted and I think it provides a good solution. So hopefully you can consider that as an opportunity that's, you know, short-lived in my perspective because we're supposed to close on this on December 15. I was hoping to get guidance before so that we could either move forward or, you know, finally abandon this. But, you know, I, I like to see, I think there's something to be done. And I think we can contribute, contribute to the community through this use and through this process. Thank you.
Next time, call them back.
Can I, I want to mention that when I saw the first project that was brought about, I mean, it's beautiful, don't get me wrong, I, I would love to see something there. I mean, but now you, you're saying commercial, it's even better. Because you're talking about maybe a supermarket or a coffee shop or, you know, something that residents, because you, you gotta understand, you have to live here to understand that. If you don't live here, you, 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 you don't understand. If we live here, we want to see something that we could benefit. We just don't want to see another warehouse, another, you know, building. We want to see something that we can go to. We don't want to go to Miami Gardens to go to a restaurant. You know, we don't want to go to, to Miami Lakes. We don't want to do that, we want to come to our city and enjoy the benefit of what's bringing, what's, what's coming to the city. Now, if you can get DERM to guarantee that there's no contamination, I'll be the first one to vote yes. I will be the first one to vote yes on this. But you, you can't guarantee that there's not going to be no contamination, even doing this commercial property or development. And that's where my concern is because residents that live behind there have to live there and will probably be exposed to it. I mean, it's a beautiful.
Are they not exposed to it now?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
But just, let's just logically think about this. The land is exposed right now. So if they're gonna get contaminated with a building, if they're putting a layer of protection that's gonna be safer, why don't we not want, I'm just, like, do we feel like they're just gonna bug the system?
And I know what I want and I want to see. I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. Don't get me wrong, I think it's a beautiful idea. I saw the pictures, the development, it's beautiful. And, and that would make that city. And, and that would make that city or that area look really nice, but there's no guarantee that that contamination, you know why? Because it costs too much money.
But it's out and exposed. Right now, it's, right now, it's exposed.
It's exposed, well, yeah.
So isn't it better to put the, I mean, isn't it better to conceal than to just leave it exposed?
You're talking about putting a Band-Aid on something that's already there.
But, but there's no Band-Aid right now. So let's call it a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Would you, you, you get a cut, you put a Band-Aid?
I'm not gonna do it unless they can clean it out. And that's the fact.
You get cut, you go get stitches. Like you gotta fix it. We're not fixing the problem.
Well, you gotta do it right from the beginning, not just halfway.
You walk outside and you're exposed to contamination.
Can I weigh in here?
Sure.
Um, I, I think that we need to be mindful of the fact that it has been said multiple times, there is no one who is willing to touch this property in a residential capacity. So we can either go ahead and, and allow this to be done so that someone who's willing, who's come here before us multiple times, can actually move forward on a project that makes sense. Or we can guarantee that nothing ever happens to it.
Just also keep in mind that they cannot build without plans and approvals. There are going to be inspectors that are coming by to make sure when they say they're doing A, A is being done. When they're going to M, M is being done. I'm three years in development and, and let me tell you, one thing is out of place, we gotta go and fix it. So I, we, we have to have some development in the city of Opa-locka for us to progress as a city. And this seems to be the best use, the best project for the land. They have come, people have come, people have come.
And they, and they, and they leave and they leave because nobody wants to invest in cleaning it out. Why can't they put it out and clean it out? That's my question.
Because they've stated it. It costs too much money. So do you want to leave it out? Or do we want to do the best we can? And she mentioned earlier, there are golf courses that are being, you know, and maybe it's not, I mean, there are many people that have built over land, I mean, uh, landfills many moons ago, 20, 30 years ago. You know, one of the residents talked about the accidents and she was the chief. Well, she should have gotten something done about it when she was the chief. Like we have to stop arguing and fighting when things are here. That property has been like that for 15 years. And you're only coming when somebody's coming to develop on it? Those are not concerned citizens, in my opinion. They should have been fighting every day, every day, every day, 365 days of the year to do something about that property. Just because it's privately owned doesn't mean that it should just be sitting there. It should be cut. It should be maintained. That's a city issue, but now we have somebody else coming to, 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 to develop the property. Let's get something done with the property. And along the way, they can ensure that there's fair, like fair, you know, maybe we, we put something in there that says we need to do X amount of job fairs. Maybe we put something in there coming where people get proper notice. I, I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm ready to go.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Motion to, excuse me, motion to rezon 1700. Motion.
So moved. Claudia seconds.
Roll call.
Okay. Remember Aldo Mata?
Yes.
Remember Dawn Mangum?
Yes.
Remember Audrey Dominguez?
No.
Remember Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider the final, final site plan review request for the construction of two commercial industrial mixed-use buildings on the property located at 1700 Service Road and identified by Folio 0821220052170 in the RTH zoning district and within the corridor mixed-use overlay providing for an effective date.
Members of the board, I believe that you've already seen the presentation that's been made in relationship to the site plan.
Yes.
Was with the two structures. So if you have any questions for our applicant or questions for Mr. Lee, we can probably address those at this time.
My, I, I got a question on this. I see that the, the structure here is very modern, by the way, very beautiful. But you know, we do have the marsh look here in Opa-locka. And I see that it has, you know, I saw it in the, in the welcome, but I don't see it anywhere in the actual building themselves. Is that something you guys are planning on working on?
Hi, Hope Calhoun, Land Development Council, Land Council for the applicant. We're happy to work with the design, on the design with the appropriate person so that the themes that are consistent with modern development also honor the city's history.
That's kind of like one of the entrances of, of the city. So I kind of just would like to at least throw some of that inside of this right here.
We agree.
We don't know exactly what that is, but we'll, we'll talk to the architect and figure out how we can make something work.
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, I know we, we talked about it when a storage company came in, we kind of threw it in there and then they kind of remodeled certain things. We're not, we're not architect ourselves, so I guess when we see it, we will know. So I mean, if we approve it, we could do that. What is it called? Like we can put that in there, right?
Stipulation.
A stipulation for the, for the marsh. More marsh, yeah. Okay.
Yes, you, you, you can be able to make that particular stipulation at the moorish architecture design be reflected within the overall design of the, of the project. We, we've suggested that in other occasions as well. And we've even gestured that there is such a thing, it's called modern moorish.
Modern moorish.
Yes.
The owner is here and here's you, the developer. He will take that back to his architect.
Perfect. So approve with that stipulation of the moorish.
Would you make the motion?
Motion?
Motion to accept the final site plan?
Roll call.
With, with those modifications.
With the modifications.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? You missed out.
Motion to approve with the stipulations of the moorish.
Remember Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
Remember Audrey Dominguez?
No.
Remember Dawn Mangum?
Yes.
Remember Aldo Malt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider the development agreement review requests for the construction of two commercial industrial mixed-use buildings on the property located at 1700 Service Road and identified by Folios 0821220052170 in the RTH zoning district and within the corridor mixed-use overlay providing for an effective date.
Members of the board, this is basically to address the developer's agreement. This is your opportunity where if you have certain ideals or criteria that you would like to see reflected within the development agreement, this is the opportunity to do
Just for clarity, things like the job fair, work opportunities, those types of things, Mr.?
Um, I do see some of those things in this agreement.
As it relates to those particular items that, and I'll, I'll let legal to step in where, where appropriate. Our understanding is we try our best to make sure that the developers are aware that they need to have some type of a job fair or have some type of employment, training, whether, whether it be through an apprenticeship or what have you, where we can encourage people within the Opa-locka community to be a part of the, the development process. We've had numerous job fairs, some sponsored by the city, some sponsored by the applicant. We can't make people come to a job fair. We can't make people apply for a job. And in some instances, we cannot make, well, I won't say some, in all instances, we cannot make the developer hire a specific person. That is not our job. That is not our responsibility. And as much as people want to put the Department of Community Planning and Community Development on Front Street to blame us for that, that's not something that we're assigned to do. We're assigned to basically monitor that the development agreement is adhered to. So if they do have a job fair, if they do have an employment opportunity and they present that to the community, that's the best we can do. We cannot make them hire you. We cannot make them employ you. We can have them present the opportunity for you to be trained and employed. If the residents choose not to do that, that's not something that's our fault.
Is there a way, you know, I don't know how a job fair is run. And I understand that you guys cannot make the developers hire any individual. But I think what I was hearing from the homeowners, which should be here, but they left, is that they're getting things, and this has been very consistent, like we're bringing in developers, no one's ever getting hired. This is not the first, fifth or the 10th time I've heard it. But I want to see if we could be a little bit more intentional on hosting mini job fairs in connection with the developers to give people multiple opportunities to be able to come and, and have them registered and, and not only register when they show up, they need to sign in so that now we can start tracking and saying, on this day, we hosted a job fair, 82 people registered, five people showed up or zero people showed up. So we can document the work that we're doing in efforts. And it doesn't mean everybody will be hired, but if two people are hired, you know, that's better than zero, you know? Same thing with development. You know, when, when, when small businesses come, you know, those small businesses have to also be mindful that they have to have the right criteria. We can't just put anybody in a commercial space for three and five years. And I'm not saying this is going to happen, but now they can't pay the rent. So it also has to be, they have to understand that there's a criteria that comes along and a responsibility that comes along with being a tenant. So, or a L C. So I just want to see, I mean, I would even want to be involved in the job fair. I want to see what's going on. I want to be on the front end of the job fair. Let's create the systems in place where people could register, have them, even if I have to come and facilitate them so we can document. Cause to hear that there was a job fair and nobody showed up, what else did you want us to do? I mean, we did the job, we did the work. And then we can't continue to have job fairs and, and, and employ people to be there and then nobody shows up. So now that's a problem too, because the city has to pay for people to be there if we're in partnership with them. So I think we need to do a better job of just documenting that. That's all I wanted to say. I, I know that was long-winded, but.
Can I just add, which is intended to be constructive, but not with this project in particular, but I can just tell you from experience that, and you, you kind of alluded to this, right? Oftentimes what happens is even if people do show up to the job fair, there are certain requirements, right, for construction jobs that everyone doesn't always have. So even if they do show up, maybe they're not licensed, maybe they're not bonded, you know, maybe there are other things that are preventing them from getting the job. So I've seen it happen. I haven't, again, I'm not speaking to this particular development, but I've seen it happen often. So just something to keep in mind when people say, I'm not hired or I'm not getting hired. Sometimes it's not just, oftentimes it's not because somebody doesn't want to hire, it's there are other things preventing it.
We got it.
Thank you for that.
Everyone, you ready for ready to vote? Motion to accept the development agreement for 1700 Service Road?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Claudia, second.
Remember Aldo Malt? Aldo Mata, sorry. Approve. Yes. Uh, remember Dawn Mangum?
Yes.
Remember Audrey Dominguez?
No.
Remember Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you all. Thank you for the time. Have a good night.
Next item.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider the special exception request for the operation of a liquor store on the property located at 13449 Northwest 42nd Avenue and identified by Folio 0821290160010 in the liberal industrial I-3 zoning district and within the corridor mixed-use district providing for an effective
Okay, members of the board, this is an application for a special exception to allow for a liquor store to be within a industrial facility. The property is zone I-3. We, we do have the property owner and the applicants here to make a presentation. And this is just more of a procedural thing because this is a special exception to allow this particular use to occur. But we are looking at making modifications to our zoning code to address this in future endeavors.
Public?
The applicant is here. Mr., Mr. Whitebook.
Hello, my name is Daniel Whitebook. I'm the property owner at 13449 Northwest 42nd Avenue in Opa-locka. Right now, we have the Opa-locka Flea Market, indoor flea market in this location. It's already allows residential. The, um, the statute provides, the code provides that a liquor store is allowed in this particular type of zoning. And we're not looking for a variance, we're not looking for anything special. We already have retail there, but we need to have this special exception. There's three things that say it can't be near a school, it can't be near a park, and it can't be near a church. We've all determined that it's not near, within the 500 steps away from any of those things. We have site maps, we have everything. It's nothing special. It should just be pretty simple. It's allowed within the zoning and we're not asking for anything other than what's already been allowed.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
I have a question. How many liquor stores do we have in the city of Opa-locka?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head. I believe there are about five.
Okay, another question. What is Blue Fury Sports Complex?
Blue Fury is, is, is a indoor sports facility, uh, which is within this particular development. It is a.
And there's children there?
Well, there's children and adult, but it, but it's pretty much an activity place where you can have indoor sports.
And it's inside the flea market?
Yes, it is. Well, it's, it's, it's within the same structure facility, but it's not in, it's, it's not within the flea market.
No, I know, but it's inside the, the, the address. It's inside the address where the liquor store is going to be at?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I'm representing Opa-locka Airport Liquors, the entity that, um, wants to secure the space there. Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody here. We've been in talks with Mr. Gay and Mr. Lee for about over a year already, uh, trying to bring this to fruition. Um, the, the property on Forty-second Avenue is quite large. Aside from the indoor flea market and Blue Fury, uh, there are other businesses there operating. The liquor store would just be one more. Um, and Blue Fury, yes, there are children there, but it's also um, geared toward, towards adults. And it's open late also. It's not part of the be set completely separate, separate entity, separate structure, separate entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
One more thing, from my understanding, there's two uh, liquor stores in Opa. One on Twenty-second Avenue and one on Twenty-seventh Avenue. I don't know of, of any others that, that I've seen.
I think there's more.
Are you ready?
The place that you're talking about with the children is how many miles or? It's in the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, uh, there's four different buildings at the address. The, the property is, uh, I think three blocks from one thirty-second street to one thirty-fifth. There's four separate buildings. Uh, Blue Fury is in building D, the furthest north building on one thirty-fifth. And this location would be in building C, uh, on Forty-second Avenue.
Do we know the requirement for how far away? Is that a requirement here? How far away does a liquor store need to be away from children?
There, there's no stipulation as it relates to children. It more so speaks in relationship to churches, parks, and, and schools. So it does not specify um, a age requirement as it relates to um, this particular type of use.
Do we meet the, the requirement from where that liquor store is in terms of how much radius we need to be apart from schools, churches, and?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And it could be true. What's the name of the place again? I want to address it properly. Blue?
Fury Sports Complex.
Blue Fury.
How long have they been in the space? Are they tenants of the space? They could potentially not renew their lease and be gone?
They could be gone next week.
They could be.
No, I just, I'm just trying to identify if this is a place that they were gonna permanently be for the next ex, that's, that was it.
But the law and the code says school, church.
I understand.
It doesn't say anything about children. There's children.
I understand.
But, but what, what you're, what you're also saying is that this place is not just kids playing, it's kids and adults playing. It's like a, it's like a boomers almost.
If you go there right now, it's not a place, it's not a kid's place, it's a place where people play basketball and volleyball and pickleball. It's not, it's not like a, a kid's place. It's a mostly, it's adults. Sometimes they'll have kids play there, but it's not like a kid's place, but it, it's kind of irrelevant. It's it, it's not a school and it's not a church, and, and it's not a park.
And it's not something that's like predominantly kids, is what you're saying?
No, no, no. Kids go to school all day, so there are people there doing whatever, and then at nighttime, it's, if you go there now, it's adults playing indoor soccer, playing volleyball. It's not like
But sometimes they even bring their own beer and their own stuff, either way, because I've been into these places where, you know, it's there, there are kids there, but it's open field where people play and then, you know, bring whatever you like, yeah.
Currently, uh, a hundred feet away, across the street, there's a restaurant with a, with a bar.
With a bar, yeah.
There's, it's not like
Yeah, no, I
In a dry county. There's opportunity. This is to sell individual things, but mostly like um, focused on selling, like to the airport. People have planes, they want to stock their bar and, and buy. This is not, we didn't ask for a license to open a restaurant or bar. It's to sell individual things, like in Casaba.
Yeah.
A store, not a, it's not a place where people are going to consume on purpose. There's two different types of license. It's to a package store and to consume on purpose. We're not asking for the consumption, consumption. People could buy.
Very good. Motion to, uh, a special, motion to accept a special exception for the liquor store at one three four four nine Northwest Forty-second Avenue. The motion? Motion to approve, Mr.
Claudia, second.
Member Aldo Mata?
Yes.
Member Don Mangum?
Yes.
Member Audrey Dominguez?
No.
Member Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
So moved.
The next item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider a temporary use permit in accordance with the city's land development regulations to activate the vacant property identified by Folio zero eight two one two zero 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 four zero 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 six zero to allow truck parking on a vacant paved lot and to allow the operation of a window tinting business on a vacant improved lot as provided in ordinance seventeen dash nineteen, temporary use in occupancies providing for conditions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Members of the board, Gregory Gay. Um, we have a application that has been proffered for the temporary use. Um, it's been brought to our attention that one of these particular uses uh, is no longer going to be under consideration. Uh, so we will ask that the um, item be amended to reflect only the truck parking operation as part of the temporary use permit. The applicant is here, and they want to make a presentation in regards to, um, the item being presented. And staff will make a, their presentation as far as recommendation.
Hello, uh, my name is Rollick Bureau, and I'm representing the property owner. It's really nothing complicated. It's a vacant lot. Um, you know, it's been used for parking before. Uh, we started parking trucks, and that's really all we wanted to, just, you know, be able to park trucks in there. Um, they're not in the way of anything. They don't obstruct any, you know, cars coming by or anything like that. So we just wanted to use it for parking and, and that's really it.
And this has been used in the bass for parking?
Correct. Yes, it's a parking lot.
It's a parking lot?
Yeah.
Just so that I'm clear, they, they need a permit to, to, to re-park cars and trucks. Is that the resident?
Code enforcement wants us to apply for an occupational license. To be able to do that, we need an address. And so that we come before you to see, you know, is her okay with us just parking trucks there? So, you know, we can get her address and then apply for the occupational license.
What, what kind of trucks are we talking about?
Big semi trucks, like Amazon has, so like.
And we are removing the window tinting business?
Yes.
From, okay.
We'll no longer have any other, that's not parking.
Does staff have any recommendations or anything? Is this just for a permit? Temporary permit.
Um, this is pretty much for a temporary permit use. Um, staff does recommend approval for this particular activity. Mr. Lee can provide you with additional details.
For the most part, um, this particular opportunity for temporary use is something that is within our city's, um, code of ordinance. And it allows for temporary use to be allowed for a specified amount of time. Six months to a year, and then you request additional time. This is not for a permanent use. Usually it's for a use to activate the site to get business and attention to the property before development actually happens. So in this particular instance, they're, they're trying to, uh, foster the use of the property and then do it legally. And I guess they can continue to, to plan so that at some point in the future, they can develop the site in a, in a, in a more conducive manner that would be long-term as opposed to the temporary use permit that they're asking for. Staff is not in disagreement with it. Um, the challenge is, um, an address for not constructing some kind of office or building on the property is completely paved. It, it's completely surface parked. I think they have the markings even. Okay, but there's no structure on the property. Now, within less than five hundred feet is their office building. So if they needed an office, they could relegate to that, that's a possibility. And then we can deal with the address assignment based on that. But for long-term, we may have to do something else, but at the present time, we're asking for temporary use permit to allow truck parking on this property. Staff recommends approval.
How long is the permit for?
Initially, six months up to a year, up to twelve, six to twelve months on the initial request, and then they can ask for additional time. But it's not a permanent use.
Okay.
I motion to allow the permit for the temporary parking.
Second?
Second.
Member Aldo Mata?
Approve.
Member Don Mangum?
Yes.
Member Audrey Dominguez?
Yes.
Member Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
Next item. The next item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida to consider a final site plan review request for the construction of a forty-three thousand square foot catering facility on twelve adjacent properties located at twenty-four sixty-six Alababy Avenue and identified by Folios zero eight two one two two zero zero four zero four zero 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 eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three nine zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three eight zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three seven zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four three, zero three six zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three four zero zero eight two one twenty-two zero zero four zero three five zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three three zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three two zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three one zero zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero three Z zero 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 and zero eight twenty-one twenty-two zero zero four zero two nine zero in the I-one zoning district within the quarter mixed-use overlay and in the innovation district, providing for an effective date.
Good evening, board. I know that it's been a long night, so hopefully we can get through our project as quickly as possible. There was a bit of a short notice as far as, uh, letting us know, so unfortunately do not have a presentation to show you. Um, but I'm assuming that the staff has shared with you our site plan and possibly other supporting documents for you to take a look at our project. Um, my name is Sabrina Escobar. As mentioned, I am the land development consultant here, representing the client applicant, which is EOP Group. Um, I do appreciate the opportunity to present the gold catering industrial kitchen project for your review, review and consideration. Um, this project represent a significant investment in the City of Opa-locka's industrial corridor. Um, the goal is to transform an underutilized site into a vibrant, coded compliant and architecturally distinctive facility. Our team has worked closely with the city staff to ensure full compliance with the land development regulations, integration of high-quality design standards, and delivery of critical infrastructure improvements that will, and that will enhance the surrounding, um, area. As mentioned, this site is currently zoned I-one light industrial with a land use of industrial, so there is no need for any unused amendment or rezoning. Um, we're in line with the surrounding areas of what we're proposing. Currently, it is twelve lots, which we are looking to unify and title. Um, because the lot area is approximately seventy-five thousand square feet. Um, the current design is worth of what we are going, our intent is to build a warehouse two stories approximately of forty-three thousand forty square feet. Um, and thirty-two feet in height. Um, now, I would like to present our architect to further elaborate on the project, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, members. My name is Will Amonte with Paramount Consultants, um, the architect. Uh, to add to what Sabrina just mentioned, um, we are planning on um, presenting this full project, uh, so forty-three thousand square foot, um, uh, food packaging, um, plant. But in phases, uh, phase one being the twenty-five thousand square feet uh, full kitchen, uh, industrial kitchen, uh, loading and offices. And then the second phase will be the second kitchen, uh, due to some, um, financial situations with the client and, uh, funding. But we want to present the full project so that we don't have to come back a second time for the second phase, uh, uh, and go through the whole process again. We, in terms of construction, we will be, um, and, and when we do, um, build the, the first phase, we will provide the proper infrastructure in terms of grease trap, connections, drainage, uh, parking, uh, so on for the second phase, so that way, when we are ready to build the second phase, all we gotta do is just tap into those, uh, into that infrastructure. Um, that being said, we, as, as, uh, the gentleman Aldo Mata mentioned earlier about the Moorish um, architecture, I think that we established, we, we complied with that and that we accomplished that in sitting with Mr. Lee and Mr. Gay and, uh, other, other directors. Uh, you know, we, we, we fully appreciate it. I learned something in that meeting. I wasn't aware that Opa-locka was leading that way. Um, and I, I, I completely appreciate it, and to be honest with you, I look forward to it and, and respecting that tradition and background. And, and adding some modern touches to it, you know, but who says we can't do that, right? Um, I, then I drove through Alibaba Avenue and I saw it throughout the, most of the, most of the new, um, buildings, and especially one building that they refer me to where, um, I didn't want to take fully, you know, mimic that entire building, but I think we did something similar to it. Um, so that being said, yes, uh, we have, uh, civil engineering already in place. We have a landscape architect here as well, uh, in terms for, um, you know, for the buffering and for the, um, landscaping. Um, the civil engineer is taking care of the catch basins. He also did a, a traffic study for the loading birds and so on. Um, and, uh, we're literally ready to move forward. Now, so now please, uh, like to answer any questions you may have.
The location, uh, the location, I see there's a lot of, I guess, containers.
Yes, there's, right, there's nothing really.
Nothing really, so all that's gonna be?
Gone. Uh, we're, we're literally demolishing everything and
Perfect.
Right, and there's no mitigation, by the way. There's no contamination, nothing like that, bro. Just, let's make sure, just to be clear, yes. Any other issues will, they're out of me, obviously.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, just, just to, uh, clarify, um, Gregory Gay, the site is within our industrial central area which, which is between, uh, Northwest Twenty-second and Twenty-seventh Avenue on the south side of Alibaba. So it's in between Alibaba Avenue and So it's in between Alibaba Avenue and the CXX railroad track right away. Um, they're in a good location and, and I apologize to the attorney for having to read all of those folio numbers. But it does c- cover a significant amount of land, which they're gonna be unifying, um. This is a great opportunity to bring a new youth into the city of Opa-locka. Uh, what's, what's there now is basically. Um, cars that are being utilized for parts, scaffolding. Equipment from different things, and it's a use that has been perpetuated for a number of years, and we're. Actually very happy to see a new type of development, an enclosed warehouse facility. To come to that particular area, um, which is going to tie in with our innovation opportunities as well. Cause we're bringing a new use as well. Uh, Mister Lee is prepared to give our staff's recommendation. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, after that, we will address them.
Again, Gerald Lee, um, planning and community development.
Wake up, IT.
You know what? Let's just go. Okay, of course, you know, the commission has the ability to approve site plans. And based on the code, this plan needs to be reviewed and approved after the review and recommendation. Of the planning and zoning board. So that's why this item is before you, they've already discussed where the property is. Um, you already know that it's in an industrial zoning district, I just wanted to add. It's on the south side of Alibaba, but this zoning i- for the south side is I one. In a higher intensity in- industrial is on the other side of the street. Everything in that area is scrap metal facilities, junkyards, I'm sorry, non-conforming junkyards. Automotive repair, automotive, uh, um, bodywork and the like. This is a great opportunity to bring something new and different that goes along, as Mister Gay said. With the innovation district and it, it not only brings a new use, but that's a new opportunity for training. For job creation and so on and so forth. They are taking twelve individual parcels and making it a site. They've already submitted their documents for a unity of title, they're already prepared to move to the next level. And this site plan develops that property and brings this new business online, which is gonna be adjacent to. The beginnings of the storage facility that's already under construction, which is adjacent to this on the other side of the railroad track. So, development in that area is coming, and it's a good thing. What I wanted to, to, to also add. There was a criteria for site plans to be approved, and I just wanted to run through that quickly and then I'll be out of your way. Uh, development is permitted, the development permitted by this application of granted conforms to the comprehensive plan. And is consistent with the applicable area or neighborhood studies or plans and would serve a public benefit. Warranty the granting of the application at the time it is considered. The development permitted by the application of granted will be favorable or unfavorable impact on the economy of the city. This will have a positive impact on the city. The development permitted by the application of granted will efficiently use. And not unduly burden water, sewer, solid waste disposal, recreation, education, or other necessary public facilities. Which have been constructed or planned and budgeted for construction. It follows everything that the code requires and it does not ask for anything that it should not. Lastly, the development permitted by the application of granted will efficiently. Use and not unduly burden or affect public transportation facilities. Including mass transit, roads, streets, highways, which have been constructed or planned and budgeted for construction. And if the development is or will be accessible by public or private roads, streets or highways. It's a built environment as far as the streets and the roads. They've already provided a traffic study. And it is within the limits that should be for this development to be. Ameanable to the city. Staff recommends approval. That's the end.
I'd just like to ask to the uh, developer, um, how many employees do you foresee having there? And are you considering hiring employees from the city of Opa-locka? Is that in the?
So just to um, let you know, the current business is operating right now and has been for many years in another city.
Okay.
Um, for the most part, they are a family-owned business and with the employees that they've had longstanding, they are aware. Part of the move here to Opa-locka is because they're growing and they're increasing their foot- in footprint, which will require. More employees as part of our development agreement. That is one of the criterias. With the job fair and to have the opportunity for local community to come forward and apply, um, when the time comes. And there is a need for the jobs.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We don't have any questions, um, I'll go ahead and move the item.
My second.
Madam clerk, Roca?
One moment, man. Remember Aldo Mata?
Approve.
Uh, remember Don Mangum?
Yes.
Remember Audrey Dominguez?
Yes.
Remember Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
So moved.
Y'all wish y'all was first, huh?
One more item, one more item.
Last one.
The last item on the agenda is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Opa-locka, Florida, to consider the development agreement. Review request for the construction of a forty-three thousand square foot catering facility on the twelve adjacent properties. Located at twenty-four sixty-six Alibaba Avenue and identified by Folio zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero four zero zero. Zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three nine zero, zero eight two one two two, zero zero four, zero three eight zero. Zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three seven zero, zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three six zero. Zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three four zero, zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three five zero. Zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three three zero, zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero. Zero four, zero three two zero, zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three one zero. Zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero three zero, zero. And zero eight twenty-one twenty-two, zero zero four, zero two nine zero. In the I one zoning district within the quarter mixed-use overlay and the innovation district providing for an effective date.
Board members Gregory Gay, this is the companion item to the item you just voted on, basically to. Consider any modifications or uh, amendments as it relates to the development agreement. It is pretty much a standard development agreement, uh, we have made some modifications to development agreements over the years. To basically add a little bit more teeth, um, to basically make sure that there is some type of employment opportunities. That are going through and that they continue to report back to the city their progress over a period of time.
Yes, please, and, and they, he, the developer, uh, I'm not sure his name again, but he did mention having a Moorish look. Um, that we would like to have that to maintain the area so we can have that and, and of course, um. If we could hire, you know, residents of Opa-locka, cause there's a need for employment, so.
Uh, regarding the, the Moorish look, yeah, yes, I know that you mentioned it, but I just wanna make sure that it's on record that they include that. Um, to have some type of Moorish look outside and also to, you know.
You know, the opportunity to show you the thing and, I mean, I, was it included by any means in the package?
Plans were included in the package.
The, the renderings?
Not the renderings, ju- ju- just the plans.
I know. I mean, I, oh, you see, I'm sure.
I do see that terminology in the agreement though.
It, it's very much unlike Gregory Gay and Mister Gay and Mister Lee mentioned, we did have a pre-application with him. We walked through it, we presented them the project and the architectural component, and they were very delighted with the Moorish design.
Okay, perfect. No, we didn't, no, it's not here. Well, make sure you have it for the commission because they're gonna wanna see it. Okay.
Chop liver, which is chop liver.
Good evening, Mark Craft and um, land use attorney for the applicant. Um, the development agreement, which is the matter that's before you now, um, is the city's form. Um, we did not really try to negotiate down from any of the requirements to hold the job fairs or really, you, you know, we, we. Abided by it, um, as is, um, so we intend to comply with that requirement and we do intend to. It's actually, we've talked about job fairs a- as, you know, just two words, but it, it's actually a multi-paragraph uh, commitment. Um, from our side to work with the city staff to make sure that we're, we're doing right and we have the right noticing and outreach with community organizations to. Get involved. So we do intend to comply with exactly what the city has asked for on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Move it.
Motion to accept the development agreement for twenty-four sixty-six Alibaba.
Second.
Roca?
Remember Aldo Mata?
Approve.
Remember Don Mangum?
Yes.
Remember Audrey Dominguez?
Yes.
And remember Claudine Hibbert?
Yes.
So move.
Congratulations.
Dinner on y'all.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
Oh, that's nice. I like it, like.
Do we have any comments or questions or, or ready to adjourn?
You're on your best cologne tonight. You just came prepared.
Adjourn? Okay. Ready to adjourn? Thank you.
The motion to adjourn?
Second.